We have thirty days from when we got the information and tha- and our next meeting would be beyond the thirty day period. And I think that this proposed project is very important and that the whole board should be involved in reviewing it as opposed to just ratifying a letter sent by staff. So that is why we're having this special meeting and I guess Lucas, now you're gonna go through the, uh, project?
Uh, yes. Um, good morning, everyone. Uh, so this is a referral we received for ActQuest Development. It's a, um, it's a warehouse and delivery station, um, building that's proposed for two eleven Sawmill River Road, which is Route nine A in the town of Mount Pleasant. Uh, we're receiving it for, um, site plan approval. Um, so let's go to the next slide and I'll show you where the site location is. So this is the, um, the site is a ten point four seven acre site. It, uh, used to be the Green Valley Nursery, which has been vacant for a number of years. Uh, it's on the west side of Sawmill River Road, in between Sawmill River Road and, uh, Summil- the Summill Parkway. Um, if you go to the next slide, you'll get a sense of where it is, um, regionally. It's, uh, just south of the Hawthorne Interchange, um, but north of the Grasslands Campus, um, along nine A. Um, as a warehouse building that's dependent on, uh, trucking, um, the trucks would not be able to use the Spray Parkway or the Sawmill Parkway. Uh, so nine A would be the road that any, um, commercial vehicle would use to access the, uh, the site. Uh, most likely, um, access would be from, you know, east-west access would be from the, uh, two eighty-seven, which, uh, is to the south of the site about three miles. Um, and the next slide, uh, is a, um, kind of a close-in aerial view of the site. Uh, the site is on the left-hand side of the slide. Um, to the right of it, and that's going south on, uh, Sawmill River Road, you have another warehouse building. I believe this warehouse building is also owned by the applicant. And further to the right, south of that, is the, um, what used to be the movie theater, uh, that's now a car dealership. Um, so this is a, uh, an area that has a lot of similar types of uses, um, to what is proposed, uh, in the immediate area. Uh, on the next slide, uh, this is a description of what is proposed. So this is what's being proposed is basically a warehouse and office building, about a hundred and fifty-three thousand square feet in size. Uh, about eighty-nine percent of the space will be warehouse. Um, the remaining eleven percent, um, is going to be offices, training rooms, conference rooms, break rooms, locker rooms, et cetera. Uh, the building is proposed to function as a delivery station. That's the term that we found in the project narrative. So what this means as described in the narrative is that semi-trailers are brought in during the overnight hours containing various products. Um, workers sort these products by route during the overnight hours. And then during the daytime, um, delivery vans depart, taking the products to various, um, uh, residential and commercial sites throughout the area. Uh, so on the next slide, we'll take a look at this, how the site would operate within the context of the site plan itself. So let's start with the overnight deliveries. So approximately nineteen semi-trailers will deliver packages to the facility each night between ten P M. and eight in the morning. And, uh, the area circled with their, the red circle is, um, the loading dock that the, um, the, uh, tractor trailers would come in with these, um, with these semi-trailers. Uh, on the next slide, we'll see that, um, uh, overnight, about two hundred and twenty-two, what they call, "sortation employees," will sort the packages by route. And this generally occurs between the hours of twelve-thirty A M. and, um, eleven-thirty A M. So the area that I have circled here, this is the access point to which all of these employees, when they drive in to go to work, they will drive down this ramp and you can see to the left, there's a little, in the inset, there's a picture of this ramp that would go down below, uh, the building. And on the next slide, um, these are the plans that we have for the two levels of underground parking. So basically, um, below the warehouse, there's gonna be two levels that are much larger than the warehouse building itself in terms of footprint. Uh, these, uh, underground parking levels provide a hundred and forty-one car spaces and five hundred eighty-seven van spaces. Um, forty additional car spaces are also gonna be available at grade. Uh, on the next slide, um, so approximately two hundred and forty-nine, a- after the "sortation employees" sort everything out by route, um, approximately two hundred and forty-nine delivery drivers will arrive at this delivery station between nine-thirty A M. and twelve noon, uh, depending on what time their, uh, route, um, their scheduled route begins. So there's five hundred eighty-seven van parking spaces, um, in this parking area. The idea is that the delivery drivers would park their own cars in these van spaces and then take the van out to be loaded. Um, on the next slide, this is where the vans get loaded, this area that's circled. So the vans get driven out, um, they get, it takes them about twenty to thirty minutes to be loaded. Uh, and then they depart the facility between ten A M. and twelve-thirty P M. Uh, the next slide kinda shows what this loading area looks like. You'll see that it's got a, um, large canopy over it, um, and that the canopy has like solar panels and whatnot. Uh, this is, um, where they load the, the vans. But you'll notice that the numbers I have here on the side, um, seventy-five percent of the vans are gonna make a right turn onto, um, nine A going southbound. The idea is that they would, um, be going south to exit two on I two eighty-seven and then from there, they would fan out across the lower half of, uh, Westchester County. Um, the remaining twenty-five percent of the vans would kind of snake through the site and then make a left turn onto Route nine A, um, to, uh, to other locations. Um, on the next slide, we'll talk about how the vans return. It's a similar ratio, but just in the opposite direction. Twenty-five percent come from the north, seventy-five percent come from the south. They enter the site, um, where they, this, where they enter the site is actually going to be a new intersection on Route nine A. So the applicant is proposing that there'd be a new, uh, stoplight, uh, that the driveway be aligned to, uh, line up with, uh, Belmont Road, which is on the, um, east side of nine A. There would be a signal, um, and there would also be a new left-turn lane coming from, um, the su- the northbound direction. So seventy-five percent of the vehicles, and this also applies to the tractor trailers that come in, will be using this new left-turn lane to make left turns into the facility. In this case, the vans then go down that ramp that I showed you earlier, uh, and then they, the day begins again. Um, so on the next slide, just to go back and talk a little bit more about the delivery vans, um, the, this is a picture of what a typical van might look like. Now, in this case, this picture shows a, um, an Amazon delivery van. Um, we don't know that this is going to be the exact type of van that uses this facility. We do not know that if, for certain, if this is an Amazon facility. However, um, the terminology used to describe the facility is a "delivery station," which is, uh, that, that term is used throughout the project narrative and it matches a type of facility that Amazon currently uses as part of their distribution network, uh, delivery facility. If you go to their website, they, they use the word "delivery station" in the same context that the project narrative, uh, has. Um, the majority of i- of the, and this is, this quote here is from the project narrative, "The, uh, majority of intended delivery, uh, customers are located south of the site where the mar- major thoroughfares and population density is located." So you can imagine vans would be showing up on, in, on streets just like the one that's pictured, making deliveries to residential buildings, apartment buildings, garden, uh, garden apartments, single-family houses, all throughout, um, the, the area. On the next slide, uh, let's just talk quickly about the status of the application. Um, Mount Pleasant Planning Board declared lead agency on February sixth, um, of this year. Uh, the, uh, the county planning board did not receive this referral. We did not receive this notification. Um, after that, lead agency was declared, uh, the project, uh, the review chugged along. There were area variances that were granted by the Mount Pleasant zoning board on April sixteenth. Again, we didn't have any knowledge of this. Um, there were three variances that were granted. Um, a warehouse building was only allowed to have fifty percent of its space, um, dedicated to warehouse. The other half would have to be office or some other use. Uh, in this case, they needed eighty-nine percent, so they got a variance for that. Uh, they got a variance for the building height of the building, uh, slightly higher than what is allowed. And there is a twenty-foot retaining wall on the west side of the property, um, they needed a, a variance for that. Uh, in addition, they also got an approval from, or preliminary approval from State D O T Region Eight with respect to the changes to that, um, intersection. Uh, we got a copy of an email, uh, from May twenty-sixth stating that the traffic signal and turn lane meet all the standards of approval for State D O T. So all this kinda happened without, um, our, our review. Uh, but we did receive, uh, the referral eventually and, and that's where we are right now. Um, so on the next, uh, slide, um, right now, what we're looking at is Mount Pleasant Planning Board will meet on July second. Um, and at that point, they're either gonna issue a positive declaration or a negative declaration under seeker and then, um, depending on that, there would be a site plan approval issued to the applicant. Uh, so since we received this referral, our staff has been busy reviewing it. Um, and, uh, we have, uh, we basically have a, uh, draft letter that we, um, included in your, uh, day of, uh, meeting packets. And, um, the comments are generally grouped into three categories. Uh, first has to do with the seeker process. Then we made a number of site-specific comments. These are comments that we would make on any site plan. Um, so a lot of these are, are very familiar comments to you that we make on lots of other site plan applications. Um, and then finally, we made, um, a number of comments concerning, uh, larger, big, bigger-picture intermunicipal impacts uh, that, um, we found with this, um, development. So first, let's take a look at the seeker process. Um, okay, uh, so the Mount Pleasant Planning Board, uh, at this point, is either gonna have to make a positive declaration or a negative declaration as to whether additional study is required to issue an approval. Um, our staff analysis, um, you know, when we took a look at it, it kind of raised an issue that we felt that the town may not have enough information to make this decision. That's just our opinion, but that's, um, kind of the opinion, the consensus of the staff when reviewing it. Um, the traffic, one of the issues is that the traffic analysis does not take into account the nearby North Sixty, uh, development that's happening on the Grasslands Campus. Uh, that would be three point two million square feet of new development on the county's Grassland Campus that would have a, would be along nine A in between the site and two eighty-seven. Um, so, and that's just one example. But a- acting on seeker without information on cumulative impacts such as this, as well as impacts to the adjacent municipalities, because all the traffic between the site and two eighty-seven is gonna have to go through two other municipalities, Greenberg and Elmsford, this, um, this could, we're worried about a seeker segmentation. Um, where i- impacts are evaluated and then other impacts are valued separately and not, um, together in cumulatively to, to give a, a good, um, to allow that hard-looking decision, um, with, with respect to seeker. Um, moving on to the site-specific, um, comment, the first comment we had was about the intensity and specificity of the use. Um, five hundred eighty-seven van parking spaces are shown on the plan, but we're being told from the project narrative that there will only be two hundred and forty-nine delivery vans. So this raises a question, well, are there gonna be more vans in the future? Or is this, or is it gonna be limited to this two hundred and forty-nine delivery vans? But we weren't able to determine that from the submitted information. Um, also, uh, there's a question about technological advancements with the sorting and delivery methods. Will that change the, the facility? Um, a- as we all know, there's been a lot of technological changes with, with the, um, delivery and distribution of, of goods. Um, what happens if they use more robotic sorting, um, within the facility? Does that mean fewer people will work there? What if there's a change to driverless vans in the future or to drone delivery in the future? Uh, drone delivery is already being used in, in other parts of the country. What if that were to happen in this site? Um, also, uh, with respect to the site, we also had a question about the servicing of the vehicles. They don't show any areas on the plans about where vehicles would be serviced, repaired, refueled. Um, that, will that occur on the site or will that occur off-site? Yeah, it's just something we would be, we wanna know, but it just wasn't in the information we received. Um, moving on to the next slide, uh, we had some concerns about pedestrian and transit access. The site is served by three different B-line bus routes. Um, you can see in the diagram, I've shown where the, the, well, one of the bus stops is existing. That's the one at the bottom of the screen. That's at the corner of Belmont Road and Route nine A. The applicant is proposing to add, um, some sidewalks, uh, and a bus pullover area for the bus stop on the, um, southbound side of nine A. Uh, currently, it's located further to the south. The applicant is proposing to move it a little to the north so that it can be accommodated with these sidewalks, uh, the bus pull-out area, et cetera. Um, but it's interesting because the project narrative states that the employees would only use the stop, the, the southbound bus stop, that there would be no reason for a, um, transit rider who's working at the site to ever cross Route nine A to access that stop on the northbound side. And because of that argument, they're, they're saying that there's no need to do crosswalks, pedestrian signals, uh, anything like that with this particular intersection. And, and you can see that in their application that they made to State D O T to do the intersection. Um, we, obviously, we, we disagree with this. Uh, anybody who's taking a bus to the site would most likely, on the way home, have to go to the other side of the road to catch the bus back the other way. Um, so, you know, this is, we, we flag this as an issue. Also, our letter, um, points out to the town and to the applicant that, um, the county has bus stop, uh, design guidelines um, and that they should really work with our, um, transportation staff here in the planning department to figure out the best place for this bus stop and the best design treatment for it so that it works for the employees and people coming to the site. Um, on the next slide, uh, we just had a comment about stormwater management. Um, the, um, the site will mostly be developed when, um, when it's finished. There won't be a lot of empty space left. Uh, so they're showing that a lot of the stormwater ma- um, would be managed through subsurface, uh, stormwater management devices. So they're showing a whole bunch of them, uh, here on, on the west side of the site, in between the, the retaining wall. This can be a, this is where the twenty-foot retaining wall is. And then on the other side of that wall will be the, um, at a lower elevation, will be the, uh, subsurface, um, stormwater management devices. Those devices, when they, uh, are full, um, when they reach a certain level, will then discharge, uh, down that slope that you see into the Sawmill River Parkway right-of-way. So this makes it absolutely critical that these, um, subsurface stormwater management devices are maintained. If they were to fill up with sediment, a lot, a much higher volume of water would be flushed out into the Parkway right-of-way, which, and as you know, the Summill Parkway has flooding issues and whatnot. And we wouldn't wanna see additional water, um, directed down to that Parkway. Um, the next slide just has a couple of other, uh, comments that we typically make on almost all of the referrals we receive. With recycling, um, this site will most likely, will have more than a hundred employees, so there's reporting requirements that they need to be aware of. Uh, we always push for, uh, green building technology to be incorporated into any development. In this case, they are showing solar arrays on the roof, which is a good thing. Um, we'd like to ask if there is a potential for them to use electric vehicles, particularly for some of the delivery vans. Um, also, there should be bike parking provided for employees. The site is fairly close to the North County Trailway, um, particularly for people coming in off-hours when traffic might be lower on nine A. It might make sense for them to ride bikes to work. There will be locker rooms and whatnot inside the, inside the facility, so, uh, bike parking should be provided. Um, that's pretty much it for the site-specific comments. We just have a couple more slides about, um, the intermunicipal comments. Um, going back to the traffic, um, as we said before, seventy-five percent of the, the delivery van and the truck traffic, both leaving from and returning to the facility will be from, on nine A in between the subject site and two eighty-seven and Elmsford. So I highlighted in this slide, the, um, this is nine A and you can see where the North Sixty is located, um, relative to the, um, to the subject site. So on the next slide, um, you know, this is again what I said earlier, that there's going to be substantial traffic impacts to both Greenberg and Elmsford. And a lot of that will be cumulative once the North Sixty development comes online. And, um, the traffic, uh, analysis that was submitted didn't include the North Sixty. Um, also, there's a, eh, eh, more generally, there is the concern that the impacts that, that these vans could have on local traffic volumes and safety throughout the county. Um, you know, it's not clear if these vans will be directed, that, that the routes are gonna be determined by computer algorithms that go through a, a G P S that the driver has to respond to. In those cases, would these vans potentially be sent on to, um, low-traffic residential streets as a way to save, um, a few miles here, a few miles there? You know, we don't know. Would this, would this ultimately mean that certain roads would have to be closed to commercial traffic? Um, you know, we, we don't know. Uh, it's, so it's a concern that they might be using roads that are not intended for, uh, through traffic with, um, delivery vans. Uh, on the next slide, uh, there's also a concern, um, that there could be like, um, an impact to our central business districts. We all know that online retail has had a clear and negative impact on many of our downtowns and commercial areas. Um, a delivery station such as this is going to be, it's, it's basically going to be set up so that it will shorten the delivery times for an online purchase. Um, it might increase the, um, uh, local consumer's reliance on online purchases now that they're arriving, um, at their homes faster and making, making it more convenient. Um, if there's a shift to more online purchases, that may mean that there could be less business for traditional commercial areas in the county. Uh, and then finally, um, the last intermunicipal, uh, impact we looked at was workforce housing. Um, so the delivery station jobs, if you go online and just poke around and see who's hiring for delivery stations, um, they're advertised at about fifteen dollars per hour and most jobs are part-time. Our housing needs assessment notes that there is a one thousand six hundred eighty-seven dollar per month gap between a two-bedroom apartment that's a, that's affordable to an hourly renter wage of fifteen dollars and fifty-five cents per hour. That's, that's the hourly renter, uh, wage in Mount Pleasant. So that's, that wage is very similar to the wage that the delivery station would pay. So it's pretty clear that whoever works in this location will have a tough time affording a, uh, an apartment in Mount Pleasant. So that means that other municipalities will need to provide the housing, the services to, um, these workers so that they can work in this facility in Mount Pleasant. Uh, we also point out that Mount Pleasant has not adopted the model ordinance and does not have a large number of affordable A F F H units in the town. I think the, uh, the current count is only, um, ten units. Um, so it's, there's a, there's gonna be a mismatch between the jobs and the affordable housing with this, with this development. Uh, so that's basically what we have in the letter. Um, and the next steps are, uh, to get a letter back to the Mount Pleasant Planning Board before their July second meeting. And, um, at that point, uh, at this point, we can have questions or thoughts.
Okay, thi- this is Richard. Um, I just wanna make a few comments and then turn it over to the members of the board to review it. Um, you can probably see why I thought that this was an important, uh, pro- proposed project that this board should review. Nine A is currently a problematic issue relating to traffic without any future development. In fact, in the past, there was a proposed nine-A bypass, which, uh, the state actually prepared plans for to get truck traffic off of nine A and to improve the traffic conditions. Unfortunately, that was, that bypass was never funded. But here we have this particular development, which is gonna produce between six and nine cars a minute during peak hours. And the development does not take into account the traffic that's going to be generated by the North Sixty project, which is, you know, a much, which is a very large project. And in fact, I watched the Mount Pleasant Planning Board meeting when this was discussed and the chairman of the planning board made several comments saying that traffic was bad on nine A. This is gonna make it worse. They did not include the study of, uh, of the North Sixty. The impact on the neighboring jurisdictions of Elmsford and Greenberg is gonna be substantial, which are also not included in their, in their traffic study. And in fact, the chairman of the planning board said he was thinking about the possibility of posdecking this development, which means that would have to go to a full environmental impact statement. What we are proposing to say in our letter is that further study needs to be done, particularly regarding to tr- traffic, by the planning board before they would, we feel they would be in a position to make a negative declaration or approve the site plan. And that's why I, I, we thought that there should be this special meeting, that the whole board should be involved in that analysis. And I'd like maybe first, members of the board who live in Mount Pleasant, maybe give some comments. I know Kathy, you live in Mount Pleasant. You have any comments here? Can you unmute Kathy?
Uh, yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I, I agree with the fact that the traffic, I happen to live behind the dam and you know how I feel about the fact that you can't cross the dam anymore. Six thousand cars were displaced just in Valhalla. So Mount Pleasant is bursting. Um, my other question, Lucas, to you, and I just, I can't remember, um, Rosedale Nursery is right down the street. Is it right next to where Green Valley was? Um, and how, how would that impact a very popular, uh, I think, pretty prosperous Rosedale Nursery?
Uh, Rosedale Nursery is several parcels to the south. Um, so, I mean, it's not, they're not next to each other, but they're like, you know, they're, they're close.
Right.
Um, that's not on the, uh, it's not on this aerial photo. It would be, if you look at this photo, it's several more lots to the right.
Right, okay. I just couldn't remember right now. Rosedale is right next to the, uh, what was the movie theater. So, so, Richard, the bottom line is, is that traffic is, is just building and building and building and, um, this would certainly have another impact on the already very congested areas of Mount Pleasant.
Okay, thank you Kathy. Do we have someone else from North Castle who, here? At the meeting?
Um, well, I'm, uh, this is Holly. I'm from North Castle, but this is not in North Castle.
I'm sorry, it's Mount Pleasant, I meant Mount Pleasant.
But I would be concerned about, um, just the, the extra maintenance and, and that those heavy trucks will, um, you know, actually put a lot of wear and tear on those roads. Are they, would they contribute towards maintaining the, the road? Um, those heavy trucks that are gonna be going through at nighttime?
Uh, there's nothing in the plan that indicates that they will.
I mean, the roads, you know, are in bad shape and, and they really should contribute to that, I would think. That's just my opinion.
Uh, that, I think that would have to be taken up with State D O T, um, in the sense that nine A is a truck route. So, I mean, their trucks are allowed to operate on nine A. Um, so I don't, that would have to be worked out between the applicant and State D O T. I mean, as for local roads that all these vans are gonna be plying, you know, I, that's a, that's a different issue.
Anyone else have any comments?
Hey, Richard, it's James. So, I'm a fan of Amazon because they're gonna be the new normal. My only fear would be that, once they, if they did take that land or that lot, that, who's to say in five or ten years down the road that they take it and they join you and take up the whole side of that street over there? So it, it could be something for the future that they're looking at and start today, but then tomorrow, it could be something bigger than we would ever imagine.
Well, the site is sort of between two developed sites already.
Right, but there's a, there's the other, the nursery over there, which could go for sale in the near future or years down the road. And who's to say that they wouldn't bind the locks in between? With the people, with, with the established businesses already on them.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, it's my understanding of the applicant owns the lot to the south. It's my understanding of the applicant. It's my understanding that the applicant already owns that lot.
Yeah, if you see that, if you look at the, um, right in the middle of the aerial, that's the warehouse that the applicant owns, which is directly south of the property. Anyone else have any comments?
Yes, this is Rini, and I'm concerned about the flood issue. My experience has been that these underground, um, flood mitigation efforts, uh, the maintenance required to keep them operating is considerable, and they fail a lot. A lot of the flooding, at least down here, comes from the lack of cleaning them out and so forth. And Sawmill has enough flooding issues already. I'm not real happy with venting any overflow onto the Sawmill right away. Uh, I'm also a little concerned because I would not recommend anybody riding on a bicycle in the dark on the Sawmill Parkway. I cannot imagine doing it myself. I mean, it's a very curvy road, people speed like nut, like crazy, and it's very curvy, and it's flooded. And putting more traffic onto the Sawmill, um, and 9A, both of which are already overcrowded, I don't know how well-conceived this is. I'm, I'm also concerned, why don't we know who's going to be operating on the site? That worries me as well. Um, and there's no way these people are going to live in Mount Pleasant. I mean, there's no possibility. So I think that they, if they're going to hire people at $15 an hour, then they better build some housing real nearby that these people are going to be able to afford. Because at $15 an hour, no way you're going to, you're going to live in this area, and affordable housing is already a problem. So more low-income jobs, um, I don't know why they're getting all of these variances when all they're bringing, it seems, is, is trouble. I don't see what the benefit is to the communities at all. And I, I would have to hear more about what is going to be beneficial to Westchester County by this, whomever it is relocating here.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else have any comments?
Yeah, hi, this is Rob. Oh, and I just clicked that, my notes just, just got covered. So, uh, yeah, I can, I definitely concur on the traffic issue. Um, you can't, you know, I, I, I live very close to Elmsford, and, um, you can't go to any meeting in Elmsford without, um, people wistfully talking about the, the 9A bypass because, you know, the truck traffic on 9A is just, um, I mean, I've sat there for 20 minutes sometimes, um, heading south towards 287, just, you know, stuck in truck, in truck traffic. Um, and I, and I just want to say, I mean, I thought Lucas's, um, presentation was really, was spot-on in so many ways, because pedestrian and bicycle, um, safety along 9A is a disaster. Um, and, you know, connecting, there's really no good way to get from the, the North County Trail over to that area in a, in a safe way. Um, and there's no good way to walk up and down 9A, even in, even in Elmsford. And once you get the, to this area, it's, um, there's, there's nothing. Um, people, you know, people are, are literally walking in the road. I, I do have a question, if, if we could, you know, when we look at the, how people are going to get there, if there's a way that we could add, um, transportation to the calculation of the, um, housing needs assessment, so it's called like, uh, you know, the H&amp;T, um, calculation, um, because I think the deficit would show it's even greater, especially if people are commuting from, um, lower-income communities. Uh, they're going to need to have to own a car, and we know how bad that's been in terms of the debt, um, that are, that's piled on to people. The, the, my last question is this, that, you know, we're, you know, I understand that we're, we're concerned about the sort of, the switch over to online delivery and how that's affecting our, our downtowns and our, our, you know, commercial sector. I guess my question is, by restricting, let's say, let's say we had the power to reject this, this development because we, we were, we were concerned about the growth in online deliveries. They would just, you know, set up shop in, you know, somewhere else, like in Rockland County, which is sort of like, you know, begging these places to open up there, and we'd have increased vehicle miles traveled, uh, for people not only getting there, but to, um, for the vans to travel. And the question I have is whether maybe we should be using something that's, that gets at this issue in a more precise way, like, you know, a county VMT tax or something like that, that addresses this in a much more global fashion as opposed to like, just sort of approving and rejecting a site plan.
Yeah. Can I just, uh, piggyback on what Robert just said? Because I don't think fighting online delivery is, is, I mean, it's coming. But the question is, how can we mitigate the impact? And I think that perhaps with some thought, we could, uh, in fact, talk about what would be needed to mitigate the impact of this development, because it, it's going to make a big change in that area, and, uh, I think that there just has to be some benefit into, in it, uh, for the employees and for the county. So perhaps we should think of it that way in terms of, you know, if you want this development, what else needs to come along with it? I think that would be a good idea.
Yeah, I mean, we're going to be raising the same points, um, oh, I'm sorry, I, I'm going to be raising the same points when, about the North 60. I mean, the North 60, I mean, my tenure on this board, like, I've never seen the North 60 come up, you know, on, on the agenda, which is, you know, for whatever reason that is. Um, and I think, I'm, I'm really concerned that the North 60 is going to just, just like completely, you know, be all about cars and get short shrift here, so. I think this is a good sort of way to sort of get, get at some of those issues now.
Yeah, and have we verified that the buses run late enough in, at night to deliver these people if they were going to use mass transit?
Naomi, are you there?
Well, uh, this is Lucas. Um, I don't, like, for the sortation employees who arrive at 12:30 in the morning, no, no, there wouldn't be a bus that would take them there. They could get home, or they couldn't get there.
Well, that's not going to do them very much good.
The delivery.
Drive to work is, yeah, I mean, that, that would be very difficult then, and it's at night, so there's, there's no alternative.
Okay, any, any other comments?
Yeah, I mean, I mean, but overall, Richard, I think we, what, what, what people are saying is that we really need a, like, a transportation demand management plan for this site.
And a housing demand. Either that or they're going to have to raise the wages.
Okay, anyone else who hasn't spoken have any comments? Okay, I'm going to make two comments, um, and then, first is to remind everyone on the board, what our authority is here, uh, we can make a recommendation to the town planning board, which they can take or leave on their own. They can ignore us, but they couldn't, they can't vote until they've given us 30 days to make a comment. Okay, secondly, I think the role of the county planning board is to deal with issues that are intermunicipal. For example, in this case, the impact on Town of Greenberg and the Village of Elmsford by this particular proposal. And therefore, I make a recommendation that there be a new policy of the planning board, county planning board, that we send copies of our letters that go out to the various municipalities for their dev, development proposals, that we send copies to any adjoining municipalities or other municipalities impacted by the development. So in this case, I think we should send a copy of whatever letter we send to the Town of Greenberg and to the Village of Elmsford. I would like to start that policy with this particular application and to continue it into the future. And just one other example, we had a development in Newcastle a while back, which impacted the Byram River, which eventually impacts the Village of Porchester. But since it's not close enough to be within the required notification period of the Town of, uh, Newcastle, therefore, um, they were not notified. And I think in the future, it should be our responsibility as the county planning board to notify other municipalities that will be impacted. And, uh, I'd like some consensus on that, if the board agrees that that's something that we should be doing.
Richard, I, I think, I think it would depend on scale of projects. I mean, there's a lot of, a lot of small projects that, that I don't think is necessary for us to do. So this, this, anything that has a environmental impact statement for a start, I would think, would fit into the category that you're describing. And then I don't know if there's another way to size, uh, where we're going to have, but the a, actual traffic impacts on this are so large that I certainly agree with you that they should be notified this is coming, but I'm not quite sure how to scale it so that, uh, we're, we're not doing this for everything, but doing it for things that have, uh, clear significance, so.
Yeah, I, I agree also, this is Rini, and I think that anything that we believe will have an impact, I mean, a substantial or, you know, some measurable impact, and we could just leave it at that. Anything that we decide will have an impact, we should notify. And I have a question as well.
Remember that most, most of the letters that go out, go out by staff, uh, and they are then ratified at our next meeting. It's only large projects like this, which actually, a referral of interest comes before the board, before a letter goes out. So I think we should direct staff to send those letters in cases where they feel that the impact of the adjoining municipalities or the other impacted municipalities is justified. And then we can keep track, uh, in, when you send us the referrals of interest, you can indicate whether you had sent, uh, a letter, whether staff had included, uh, copies to these other municipalities, and we can evaluate that when we have our next meeting.
Also, is the Board of Legislature going to see this?
No. Not only that, they have, Mount Pleasant has their own IDA, so, uh, uh, the county IDA will not be seeing this either. So the, the only county, uh, board is us, and, uh, I suppose they will have to notify on bus stops and things like that, uh, to the, uh, county transportation. Okay, well, there's been a lot of comments. I think that the staff letter as drafted covers pretty much all of them. And so I would like a motion, uh, to recommend sending out the staff letter to the Town of Greenberg and the Village of Elmsford.
Yes.
And I have a motion to that effect.
So I'll, I'll move that.
Thank you.
And the idea about your, um, sending out the letters to the adjoining municipalities.
Can I have a second?
Second, Kathy.
Kathy, seconds. Okay, someone call the roll, please?
Hi, this is Bill. We've got, um, Holly Hasbrook.
Yes, I'm in favor of it.
Dwight Douglas.
I'm in favor.
Robert Barron.
In favor.
Daniel Finger. I think we had Daniel on there. No?
Yeah, I'm in favor.
Great, thank you, Daniel.
I'm here.
Sorry, thank you. Um, Fisiko Picky.
Yes.
Um, Jimena Franchella. Um, Kathy O'Connor.
In favor.
James Art.
Yeah, I'm in favor.
Great, thank you. Uh, Rini Toback?
In favor.
Bernie Tomes? Okay, no Bernie. Uh, and Richard Hyman?
Yes.
And Hugh Grecian?
This is Gail, I'm here for DBW, and I'm in favor also.
Great, thank you very much, everybody.
Okay, thank you, everybody, for, uh, putting up with this, uh, awful system we have to live with until we can finally get together, uh, but it's the best that we have, and I appreciate your showing up for this special meeting, and we will meet again in July to go over capital budget proposals.
This is Norma, can I just make one comment, please? So, just, just because you brought it up, the, the, right now, the governor's executive order that allows us to meet virtually expires on July 8th. Your next meeting is July 7th. But, so we, nobody knows at this point yet whether the governor will extend it. He can only do it by the 30-day increments, and, um, he did it apparently at the very last minute last time around. So, so again, as of right now, our July meeting will be in the same WebEx format, but we cannot tell you about August. We should know for the July meeting to make, uh, an amendment to our calendar if we want to, you know, if we want to continue to do this for August. But until now, we have to stick to our original schedule of, and again, we're looking at potentially, uh, a outdoor venue, um, perhaps in one of the parks or something for, um, for the August meeting, anyway.
Okay, thank you, Norma. And if anyone is interested, uh, on July 2nd in the evening, I think it's 7 o'clock, the Town of Mount Pleasant Planning Board meets, and it's, uh, there is video, uh, online at the, uh, town website, and, uh, might be interested to see how they re, respond to our letter. Again, thank you very much. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Dwight, I have a second.
Second.
Okay. I'm going to interpret that everyone voted to adjourn, and so again, we, thank you, we won't hold you here any longer. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. Thank you.
Stay healthy.